Good evening. Welcome to the Abington Township Board of Commissioners meeting for August the 11th, 2016. And may we please have a roll call.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Here.
Placido.
Here.
Tara.
Here.
Bossick.
Here.
Pepper.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
I'll be advised that Commissioner Dennis Oppone is excused. At this time, would everyone please rise for the pleasurable meeting?
Let the divisions survive and the United States remain America and the super republic which stands one nation under God, invincible with liberty, vengeance, and justice for all.
Before we get started with the agenda, I'd like to announce that on July 14th at 8:10 p.m. and on August 1st at 8:00 p.m. and also this evening, August the 11th at 7:00 p.m., the Board of Commissioners met in executive session regarding the matter of Old York LLC versus Abington Township, docket number 2016-11116, in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas. At this time, we'll move to our formal agenda, and I call on Commissioner Wayne Luker for a presentation of award to the Board of Commissioners, a three-star achievement presentation, and I'd like to call Ms. Cackie Evans up along with, if I might get my notes here. It sounds like I have, I've been given a script by Ms. Cackie Evans that I want to call up a host of people who are listed here. Emily Costello, Star Communities Technical Advisor, Senior Planner, and Dr. Damian Fernandez, Chancellor, Penn State Abington College, Star Communities University Affiliate.
Good evening, President Luker, Commissioners, Township Staff, Guests, Cackie Evans especially. We're here to celebrate a major achievement, the Star Designation of Abington Township. As a new resident, I'm very honored and proud to share and to present in this honor. I need to highlight a couple of things. First of all, the fact that Abington Township earned three stars on its first try is unusual and needs to be celebrated. And second, that this was a real citizenship grassroots movement. It would not have happened without the support of all of you, but without the phenomenal leadership of Cackie Evans. She's really a force of nature, and Emily and I are very happy to be part of this presentation tonight in this honor. Penn State is a Star Affiliate University, and Penn State Abington is committed to continuing to improve our community together. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Emily Costello, and I'm actually really thrilled to be here. I've been working as a Star Technical Advisor for a couple of years, and Abington is the first community in the whole Delaware Valley Region to receive a certification, so this is a big deal. So I'm a Senior Planner in the Office of Smart Growth at the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and most of my job involves working with municipalities to help them become more sustainable and fulfill their community goals. And forward-thinking places like Abington, they're realistic about their strengths and challenges. That way, they can make goals for the future that are realistic and then move forward and achieve them. In achieving the Star Three, the Level Three Star Community Certification, Abington has taken a huge step forward in preserving the things about it that make it special already. It has a long-rich history, beautiful neighborhoods, thriving small businesses, shopping areas, a lot of ways to interact with nature, and now it's moving towards a more sustainable future. As a member of the Star Communities Technical Advisory Group, I know firsthand how much work went into achieving this. So, Cackie, great job, and everyone else who helped. You know, this is a huge achievement and took many, many hours of work. So I'd like to congratulate President Luker, Commissioners of the Board, all the Township staff, the volunteer Commissions, and the citizens of Abington for earning this designation. And as a planner, thank you for making my job easier. Great job, Abington. Thank you.
Are there any members of the Environmental Council, the Environmental Abington Council that you could come forward, please?
I also want to, um...
Are there any more here this evening? And our two speakers, if you could come forward?
I'd like, um, if you use the partnership or like...
Okay.
Would you like all the departmentists to come on because you guys are...
Actually, I'd like to turn this over to Cackie Evans at the start.
Listen, all of you that own the Cackie Evans, when you ever go to any one of his blockwalks or anything with a plug or any, anything of that, I remember, Cackie is in rain and snow, no matter what, the weather conditions, whatever it's prepared, it's hard work. So I think all the scriptures sent me are reading. I'm going to turn it over to you, but I will make a closing comment.
Please do. And we always collect food at the recycling events, and they go to the different food covers. So I would like all you guys to come up if you don't mind, because all the department is, "Come on!" And maybe, I mean, we really did great on our greenhouse gas, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions on our stormwater management plans. The strongest areas were health and safety. We have a terrific police department. We scored 100 percent in terms of, for violent communities. We were really in the higher echelons, and we got extra credit for safe schools. We got that. I don't know where to stop. I think you all have flyers, so that's pretty much a summary. Our schools were great, and if the bar is getting raised for the future, I hope we can sustain a three-star community because we are, certification is good till Jan, June 27th of 2020. And the EAC really gets the credit. I mean, they helped lead this. They were making GIS mappings and all kinds of things. So I just really want to thank every single department in the township and all the terrific groups like the Land Grove NAACP, the Riddle Meadowbrook Civic Association, McKinley Civic Association, PAL, the Greater Glen Side Patriotic Association, all these wonderful actions. We documented it. So they really made my job very easy, and Tara was wonderful. I mean, she paid our Director of Economic Development. The EDC, you should come on up here, because you guys, I mean, we came up with some innovative things, such as now we have a Go Green Rewards Card. We're the only municipality in the United States that when you take green actions, you get rewarded through discounts at local businesses, such as Reiner Chevrolet. And Reiner, by the way, is the only, there are only 60 what's known as GM green dealers in the United States, and they're one of them. He was great enough to actually put it in other charging stations. So all kinds of great things. We have opportunities for improvement, and the reason the EAC did this, our Environmental Council, is because we thought that we had opportunities for improvement in the environmental areas. So this was basically a real good barometer of where our strengths are as a community and our opportunities for improvement. We got 100 percent for civil and human rights, but, and every Star Community, usually what's called equity empowerment is the lowest area, and we were that way, but we are the highest rated Star Community in the tri-state area, and we're really proud of that. So all I can say is, keep on shining, Commissioners and everyone, and thank you so much.
All good environmental calls. Cackie, you want to get a picture with this? And I'll just summarize for those who are watching who don't quite understand what this might involve. But the Star Community Rating System is the nation's first comprehensive framework and certification program for evaluating local sustainability encompassing economic, environmental, and social performance measures. Local leaders use the rating system's evaluation measures to assess their current level of sustainability, set targets for moving ahead, and measure progress along the way. For communities that pursue the Star Certification, the rating system encompasses economic, environmental, and social performance measures for both local governments and the broader community. So in summary, Abington Certification will last for four years, and this assessment can serve as a path for economic, social, and environmental progress. We, the Board of Commissioners, look forward to working with you in any way possible to achieve even more for all future generations. Thank you on behalf of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last point I might make, Cackie, and this is important. Abington now stands as the highest-rated Star Community in the tri-state area. So for your efforts and everyone involved with your work, we thank you all on behalf of the Township and the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
My husband, Robert, does all the cooking and cleaning, he's been wonderful.
At this time, I'd like to get approval of the minutes, and I call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
President Luker, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes of July 14th, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Tom Hecker, Commissioner Tom Hecker, that is, Director of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Public Works Committee has four items of business this evening. First is PW1, and this is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2122 to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Wisahican Watershed Municipalities and wastewater treatment plants to work together in developing an alternative TMDL plan for the watershed, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. PW2, this is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2124, adding 1908 Paper Mill Road to the Old Welsh Road Sanitary Sewer District, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. PW3, and this is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid and enter into a contract with general traffic equipment for the purchase of LED bulbs as per the bid specifications, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. PW4, and this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16-026, authorizing the Township Manager to enter into an automated red light enforcement, ARLE, project funding agreement, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Comments from residents? Name and address, and please recognize the three-minute speaking rule. Thank you.
Thirty minutes. Thirty-minute speaking rule, I like that. Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I did ask for the details on this, but all I got was the form where you were supposed to sign that you accepted it, so some, something got missed there. Can you explain what the details on this are, please?
I'll call on Township Manager Michael Feber. Was this one of the requests that Mrs. Lehman called you on today?
Um, I think I've received about 10 emails from Ms. Lehman in the last 24 hours. This may have been one of them.
Okay.
But this, the motion before you tonight, this is the grant that we received under this program that was approved by the Board last month, but the grant program requires a resolution authorizing me to sign the documentation associated with the grant. So this is a grant that was previously approved at a prior meeting by the Board. The resolution for you tonight is just authorizing me to sign the paperwork.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, all I got today was the signatures that we accepted.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes the Public Works Committee's business.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1 subdivision SD 1605, Patrick Deacon, 2661 Mount Carmel Avenue. This is a motion to approve the subdivision application of Patrick Deacon, applicant of the property located at 2661 Mount Carmel Avenue, Abington Township. The applicant seeks approval to subdivide the property into two parcels. Lot number one will contain the existing dwelling and is listed at 13,313 square feet. Proposed lot number two is plotted at 7,500 square feet, and the existing barn is marked to be removed. The properties are zoned in the R4 Residential District in Ward Number Six of the Township of Abington. This application was submitted as a preliminary final plan. However, due to DEP requirements for either an approved planning module or an approved Act 537 exemption application, this application will be reviewed for preliminary approval only. The motion's subject to the conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff?
Mr. President, if I, were we going to get an explanation from Mr. Panikow on that, or was the applicant here? Sorry.
That I don't know, but I can give you an explanation. I don't see the applicant. What I...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to see if he signed up. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Actually, didn't.
What I would ask the Commissioners to consider is you do have the ability to consider giving final approval on this, and if you look at Condition Three, the recommendation would be contingent upon them receiving their DEP approval. In other words, we wouldn't be able to record the plan or issue any type of permits until after they've received their allotted EDU. Now, they've been on our corrective action, I'm sorry, not this, this application. The flows for this are through Cheltenham Township, so I would tell you that the process, George, 60 to 90 days additional to get through the Cheltenham process before it even goes up to DEP. The applicant is aware of this. The Board, the Solicitor can weigh in on this. We have two options. We either approve this as a preliminary plan, which means after they get DEP approval, it goes back through the entire process again, Planning Commission, Code Enforcement Committee, Board of Commissioners, or you do have the ability to adopt it as a final plan with the condition that it not be recorded until after they've received DEP approval. I would prefer you take the second of those two options, but that's entirely up to the group.
And Mark, that's something we've done in the past.
Correct. We'll be doing it more and more, Stephen, only because of the, how do I say this politically correctly? There's been a slowdown at DEP on the application approval process, so more and more of these applications will have to come in with a condition.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, Mark?
No, I have no other comments.
You said the applicant is not here?
No.
I just want, one question.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Gillespie.
Commissioner Kalanowski, this is all good. This is your, fine.
And I know Patrick very well. I've known Patrick my whole life. He does good work, and I, he's a reputable contractor.
Mr. President. Sir. I'd like to make a motion that we, there's a waiver requested for the street trees. I mean, unless there's a compelling reason not to plant a few trees within the property line, I'd like to press for that. And also, there were some recommendations from the planning, the County Planning Commission set forth in a letter, one of which suggested a crosswalk to facilitate the pedestrian experience, shall we say, enhance the safety for pedestrians, including those walking to Pembren Park, which is nearby. I think that would be, you know, a very good time to...
Well, I should, Mark, is it normal, why isn't the applicant here? Have you, either one of you heard from he or she, or is it, is it, is it safe to make a, to move on this, if the applicant's not here to ask questions or defend him?
The applicant's aware that it was on the agenda. To why he is not here, I can't explain that to you, Commissioner. I can answer Commissioner Sanchez, or at least address Commissioner Sanchez's two issues. The reason we had looked, sir, at putting a waiver in for the street tree requirement is because of the slope in the retaining wall that sits there in the front of this property. And the issue with the crosswalk is, I believe that that would have to go in at the township expense. This is not a land development application where there's any additional public improvements. It's a subdivision application to relocate an existing lot line. Sidewalk's already in place. I can certainly, when we discuss this at the Planning Commission end, this particular applicant doesn't have frontage on both sides of that street to facilitate a crosswalk. So I believe if we did put one in, it would be at our expense.
President Luker, may I?
I was going to say, and all due respect, I don't think we should vote on this tonight.
Well, we, we might have.
We might have to?
Do we have time?
Yeah, I think we have time.
Do you have time on the application? If you give me just a moment?
It seems like we're asking a lot of, it seems like we're asking questions that should have been asked long before tonight.
Yeah, my only concern, President, is if we're running out of time not to take, to take action on this application, and we don't take action, then we have a deemed approval. So if we don't have time to put us into the September meeting, which I believe is on the 13th, then we're going to have to take some sort of action, and...
June 23rd it was submitted. July, August, September, 31 days twice. September 21st?
I would recommend that we table this motion until the Board's next meeting on August or on the committee meetings, because you do have...
I'll make a motion to table. Great, I think so.
Second.
So move. You okay with this?
Of course. My apologies for muddying the waters, but as you know, there were no committee meetings this month, so we, you know.
That's okay. So, so going back, we, you want to rescind the motion to approve this, and then...
I rescind.
Okay, and motion made by Commissioner Markman to table this motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Commissioner Sanchez, continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have CE2. This is the ratification of Colonnade Old York LLC Consent Order. This is a motion to ratify the August 1st, 2016 decision of the Board of Commissioners to grant actual authority to the township solicitor to enter into a consent order submitted to the Honorable Richard P. Haas in the matter of Old York LLC versus Abington Township, Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, docket number 2016-11116, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Before we vote on this, I'd like to call on Township Solicitor Michael Clark for a explanation for those who were in attendance.
Thank you, President Luker. As the Board is aware, and perhaps most of the public is aware, for the last several years, there have been ongoing issues with the renovation being done at the property known as, most commonly to everyone, as the Colonnade. In late April, early May of this year, a federal lawsuit was filed against the township regarding occupancy of the building, and then shortly thereafter, the property owner filed a state court action seeking emergency declaratory relief from the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas to permit occupancy of the building. Shortly thereafter, the township filed a motion for an injunction seeking emergency relief in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, attempting to prevent occupancy of the building. Prior to both of these lawsuits being filed, in fact, sometime in the middle part of 2015, the township retained two experts to aid us in dealing with issues with the Colonnade and dealing with the federal lawsuit and the state court action that had originally been filed back in 2015. When these most recent actions were filed, we again went to our experts and relied on their opinions regarding occupancy of the building and regarding a time, a proposed timetable for certain improvements and upgrades. Based on the fact that our experts, in their opinions, their expert opinions, that the building was safe for occupancy and that the timetable laid out for certain upgrades and certain improvements was reasonable, they both authored opinions saying that the building could be occupied. With the fact that we were going to have a hearing in front of Judge Haas, and at that time, that hearing was originally scheduled for the 16th of this month, and at that point, we were going to have to submit our expert opinion, and also the, the Colonnade was going to submit our expert opinion, it was my recommendation that in lieu of a judicial determination from the court regarding occupancy, that we enter into a consent order and that we lay out the timetables in this consent order. A consent order is essentially when both parties to an action consent to have a judge enter an order. On August 1st, I met with the Commissioners in executive session, as was mentioned earlier this evening during the executive session report, and we discussed the issues relating to our experts' opinions and the possibility of entering into the consent order. At that time, I asked those Commissioners who were in attendance to give me the authority to go to Judge Haas and indicate that the township was agreeing to enter into this consent order. Those, the majority of those Commissioners who were in attendance that evening gave me what we refer to as actual authority to go to Judge Haas and ask him to enter into this consent, or execute this consent order. Judge Haas entered the order on the 13th after both parties gave him their consent. So what we are essentially doing this evening is we are ratifying the actual authority that the Board, the majority of the Board, gave me on, on that evening to have the court execute this consent order. It was my recommendation at this, at that time, to those who were present, that under all the facts and circumstances and under all of the issues that the township is facing, and based on our expert reports, that the proper course of action was to enter into this consent order. It is still my opinion, as I've said to some of you, this is an order that if we had not entered into the consent order, Judge Haas, based on our expert reports and based on the expert reports of the, the other side's witnesses, would have entered that order on the 16th of this month. Again, I'm recommending that we ratify the vote that was, the authority that was given to me on August 1st.
Thank you, Michael Clark, I Township Solicitor. At this time, I'll take comments from Commissioners. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would like to offer an amendment to this motion that we, and I may not be using the correct language, that we rescind or reverse the consent order, and I feel that there are compelling reasons in order to do that. So that's an official amendment from me.
Solicitor, is that something that is possible legally?
Well, if I say no, it will seem as if I'm, I think it's appropriate for Commissioner Myers to say that she's opposed to this. There's a motion on the table. I think Commissioner Myers is making a motion now to essentially not ratify the consent order. So if that's essentially...
I'll second that motion.
So you have a motion and a second.
Yes.
So when we call the vote, there will be two options, but essentially, your options are going to be the same either way. You're either going to vote yes to ratify or no, not to ratify, or you're going to vote yes, not to ratify. So it's essentially the same motion.
It's not, may I?
Go ahead.
It's not the same motion. The motion is to ratif, is to ratify the consent order. The consent order is already in progress. This, my motion, is to rescind, to go back to the judge and rescind or reverse the consent order.
My apologies.
And I think that we have compelling reasons in order to do that. And one being that the experts that, whose testimony, I guess, whatever, whose letters were submitted, never, to my knowledge, in fact, Fire Marshal, help me with this, did the experts ever enter the building, to your knowledge?
Monsieur, on advice of counsel, I've been advised not to make any comment about this issue.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone, Chief Clark?
On advice of counsel, I have been advised not to make any comments about this issue.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, that's not advice that I've given, Fire Marshal Clark.
And just for clarity, that's not advice that I've given, Fire Marshal Clark.
Can I direct that question to Manager LaFever? To your knowledge, did the experts ever enter the building?
I have no knowledge, but I necessarily wouldn't have been involved directly, so I have no way of knowing whether they were in the building or not, to be honest.
Is there anyone here that knows if the experts entered the building? I'm going to take that as a no. I feel we have compelling reasons to rescind or reverse this consent order.
That's one reason. I mean, are there other, there's reasons stating?
I.
I don't know that the experts would necessarily, I don't want to get too far out here, have to be in the building to make a determination if they had all the facts in front of them.
I don't know that, I don't know that the judge had all the facts in front of him. And I am sure that members of our fire company, our fire department, excuse me, would be happy to go and testify that perhaps, I might even go any further. I think that they would be willing to do that.
Let me ask you this, so you're basically saying, but I don't think you can have two motions on the floor at the same time, correct?
Well, there are two motions that are essentially, I thought Commissioner Myers' motion was to not ratify the consent order. I think what she is saying is not just don't ratify the consent order, but then make a motion to seek to have the court rescind. So in that instance, I would say her motion is probably not timely at the moment, because you probably have the vote on the original motion to ratify the vote on the consent order. If that fails, then, or even if it doesn't fail, and Commissioner Myers wants to make the second motion to go to the judge to rescind the consent order, that would be timely at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if there are any other comments from commissioners. Commissioner Hecker.
This question is for Solicitor Clark. Could you give us your best legal opinion as to what would happen with the court should the township move forward with an authorization for us to get this rescinded?
Well, Commissioner Hecker, the essence of a consent order is that both parties have consented to the entry of the order. So both parties have indicated to the judge, in this case Judge Haas, that they agree to the entry of the order. In order to rescind the court order, the consent order, excuse me, it would have to, once again, be by both sides seeking to ask the judge to rescind the court order. I think under the circumstances and what we have been through over the last two and a half or more years, I find it highly unlikely that the other side would agree to rescind the court order. So if it was just made on our motion alone, I think it would be highly unlikely that Judge Haas would rescind the court order.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
So let's not even try, right?
All right, I'll come back. Let me just see if there are any comments from residents. Come forward, name and address, and kindly observe the three-minute speaking rule.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marlene Sellers, 1250 Greenwood Avenue. I have very personal relationships to this problem, maybe not the expertise, but I'd like to say I am here this evening to express my concerns as a former tenant of the Colonnade Apartments, Old York LLC, and former president of the Colonnade Tenants Association. When we lived at the Colonnade, we had constant failure of all the major systems, failure of fire alarms, failure of safety equipment, failure of elevators, generators, electrical systems, heatings, and I could go on and on and on, failures of habilit, habilit, hab disability that constantly endangered our very lives, constantly, and I'm sure you are all aware of this. I urge that there shall be no future occupancy until all the codes are in operation and in force. I urge that we listen to the fire departments, the volunteer fire departments, and all the other township departments, whose duty it is to protect us and assure our safety. I also urge that all the land development, zoning, parking codes of the township be enforced. I do not think this is too much to ask. Our lives are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Name and address, please.
Raymond Bell, 2076 Parkview Avenue. I don't profess to be an attorney, but let me just make one comment. I fully agree with Commissioner Myers' observation, and I would be hard pressed to understand, and if I'm understanding correctly, that if we give, if you give the authority to township solicitor to enter into a consent order, and then you want to go back to the judge and say, "I want you to forget that, and we want to change that," I think that's going to be difficult. So I agree with Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I just got the consent order in one of those emails this afternoon because it wasn't attached to the documents, and the consent order basically is another MOU. And the MOU, I believe, in my opinion, is the cause of the lawsuits and all the problems. This particular developer was not required to come to the township and have the township tell him what was needed. Instead, he argued with every code, every law, everything, and then the two attorneys got together and wrote something up that could not be enforced by code and by that document. And it caused any amount of trouble that ended up with systems that were not done the way they should have been done. And in fact, one of the major problems was that this property never ended up in land development, as it should have. It's one of the largest development projects that this township has. It was required, condition number three, for the zoning approval, to go to land development, and it never ended up in land development, and they are trying to avoid it completely ever seeing land development, which is where we talk, where the public gets to talk, where all the planners and everybody else gets to talk about the entire project. Had the entire project been taken to land development, I think you would have seen that it was far different when it was taken altogether, instead of broken up into tiny little projects where a demolition permit was given without any whole project in view. And the result was that the codes have been skirted. And I think it's, given the history of this property, where there has been a fire fatality and firemen sent to the hospital, this is not acceptable in this township. It's not acceptable. So Commissioner Myers' motion, absolutely, this should not go forward this way, and it should have full scrutiny of all of you of what's going on, and this property, above all, should be following every code and should get itself to land development immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Thank you.
I just want to say that after this is all said and done, it's going to be pretty tough for some future, for some future project where we want to have those people maintain things in accordance with the code, in accordance with the fire regulations. How are we going to, what are you going to say to them? Okay, the last time a big money person came to us, we caved, and we accepted whatever, you know, impotence we could get out of it, and that's as much as we got, so we're just going to give up and, and how are you going to force it for anybody else after this?
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the first motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanchez.
President Luker, I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Okay, one other, before we do that, Commissioner Vice President Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. I'll need to recuse myself from the vote here as I am involved in the project for the property owner.
Okay, thank you. And yes, we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sanchez?
We're voting on first the ratification?
That is correct.
The original motion, right. The original motion, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez?
Because there's no other responsible way forward, yes.
Yes, sorry, yes, for the same reasons.
Commissioner Martin?
Likewise, yes.
Commissioner Myers?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner DePoez?
Yes.
Commissioner Farron?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Kloski?
No.
Commissioner Hecker?
This is a deeply uncomfortable situation, it's untenable, but I'm going to follow the advice of counsel and say yes.
Commissioner Kalanowski?
Because of public safety and our fire department, no.
Commissioner Luker?
Yes. Count, please.
Nine in favor, four against.
Now, Commissioner Myers, Solicitor, we can take a second motion at this time, you say? Or is it moot point at this juncture?
I don't want to stop Commissioner Myers from making her motion, but essentially, it is a moot point. The board has just voted to ratify the vote, giving the actual authority to enter into the consent order, but I don't want to tell Commissioner Myers she can't make her motion.
Commissioner Myers?
My motion, my motion stands.
And I think it was seconded by Commissioner Kalanowski?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Once again, I'll be recusing myself from this vote for the same reasons.
Let the record reflect that.
For the same reason, no.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
In accordance with the advice from counsel, no.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Markman?
No.
Commissioner Schreiber?
No.
Commissioner Bowman?
No.
Commissioner DePoez?
No.
Commissioner Farron?
Yes.
Commissioner Kloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hecker?
No.
Commissioner Kalanowski?
Because of public safety and the worryment of our fire department and the constituents who elected me, no. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Luker?
No. Count, please.
Four in favor and one against.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Sanchez.
Excuse me, President Luker.
Sir, I'm sorry, Michael LaFever, Township Manager.
As Commissioner's opponent is out of state and couldn't be here this evening, he asked that the minutes reflect that he did vote no in opposition to the consent order in our executive session on August 1st.
Okay, to that point, I apologize for not calling on you. Counselor, can his vote be recorded on record?
The vote cannot be recorded, but I understand that Commissioner's opponent did want it. His knowledge that he was opposed, and that's fine, but it doesn't change the vote.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, with that, Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Finally, we have CE3, Baderwood Residential Partners LP. This is a motion to authorize the township solicitor to attend the zoning hearing board meeting as scheduled in opposition to the application of Baderwood Residential Partners LP, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? And lastly, any comments from residents?
And I'd like to hope that when we have the Board of Commissioners meeting without the committee meetings, that we can get the documents attached. No documents were attached, so there was no information on this one either. Can you explain it, please? What was their application?
Did you want to answer that now, Counselor?
Mr. Kalanowski?
Okay.
Monday of this week, a zoning hearing board application was filed that's an appeal to the actions of the zoning officer. Earlier this year, we received a conditional use application that was filed by Baderwood Partners for the development of the residential tract that sits behind Baderwood Shopping Center. That conditional use application was reviewed. The application was found to be incomplete. We forwarded a letter to the applicant explaining the 12 to 13 items that the application was delinquent on. They're not happy with that determination. They have appealed that letter that I authored to the zoning hearing board. It's their option, and that's fine. We'll mash out the items in front of the zoning hearing board, and the decision will be rendered. If the decision is in their favor, then I guess we move forward with the conditional use approval. If it is not in their favor, then they have the option to appeal to Common Pleas Court. What this motion is today in front of you is one or more of the commissioners have elected to solicit your approval to have the township solicitor attend those zoning hearing board meetings in opposition to the application. I think at this point, Mr. Clark could probably fill you in better on what's that would be.
There, the review of the ordinance and the relief requested by the applicant, the applicant is asking for significant relief from the ordinance, and I'm blanking on the fairway transfer.
Yeah, it was a. TMD.
The already transportation. That there are certain requirements that if they go to develop the back portion of this property, although it's in a couple of different parcels, that they are required to do certain things on the front parcel or parcels. The applicant is indicating that they do not believe that they are required to do those things that are laid out in the ordinance. Township staff believes that they are. There's also a question regarding ingress and egress for firefighting equipment, and there's an issue regarding the steep slopes because they're going to be building this on a hill. So overall, there is a tremendous amount of variances and relief that the applicant is asking for. We've had several meetings with the applicant, even to discuss whether or not there'd be any, whether they're willing to do anything else, and if they're not. So they just don't believe they need to do anything to the front parcel, and we believe they do. So we will appear on the 20th in opposition to the variances and in support of the determination of the zoning officer.
Is there somewhere online that I would find these documents and what the submission is?
No, ma'am, the application just came in on Monday. Generally, applications aren't posted on the webpage until about 10 days to two weeks prior to the hearing, but I'm sure if a write-to-know request is filed through the manager's office, we could make you a copy of that application. Mark, it's important to say that the zoning hearing case wouldn't be heard until at the earliest September 20th. It'll be the September board meeting, sir. It's the third Tuesday in September. This is not imminent this month. It's something that's going to happen. No, our hearings for next week are Tuesday and Thursday due to the number of cases, but this item is not on that agenda. It'll be on the September agenda. The third Tuesday. Which is the third Tuesday, I believe the solicitor thought it was the 20th, but he is correct, the 20th is September.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the code enforcement and land development agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, President Luker. PS1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2121, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25. Parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here to corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
PS2 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2125, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25. Parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here to corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, and Section 28, Special Purpose Parking Zones for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on September 8th, 2016, 7:30 PM, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff and/or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Don Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, President Luker. We have four public affairs items tonight. The first is PA1, Resolution Number 16- The first is PA1, resolution number 16-025, multimodal transportation fund program. This is a motion to adopt resolution number 16-025, approving Abington Township to submit an application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority, the CFA, for the multimodal transportation fund program. The grant submission will support phase two of the Old York Road-Susquehanna Road project, and I so move.
Second.
Uh, before we take a vote on this, did you wanna give us a brief?
Brief is my middle name.
Three-minute limit. Go ahead.
Absolutely. So, uh, at, at various points in the past, the board has approved, uh, grant applications for multimodal, for different tracks of multimodal funding for the Old York-Susquehanna project. Um, I'm not gonna go, certainly not gonna go too far in the weeds into that because in the not-too-distant future, there's gonna be a full presentation, uh, to the board, uh, updating and outlining the, the project. But basically, this is the project to, uh, acquire old properties and straighten Old York and Susquehanna and fix, uh, the problems at our most problematic intersection and right in the center of town. So, uh, we have, uh, we've actually received partial funding, uh, from one of the grants that we applied for, and, uh, it's, there's sort of the paperwork process going on right now, but that is gonna come to the board for, uh, for approval, um, and we're actually waiting here on another grant. This grant, uh, covers the next phase, um, basically moving further up York Road, uh, to, to create, uh, you know, we're gonna straight road with, uh, you know, with wide, safe sidewalks, um, and also foment, uh, a lot of economic development. We know, it's come up before the board a number of times, and it's gonna continue to come up, that we certainly need a policy regarding the funding of grants, because that, that is the way it works now. All grants from all sources require skin in the game, a 30% match, a 25% match, et cetera. In addition, it is going to come before the board, uh, as I said, the, is this brief? This isn't brief anymore, is it? All right, I'll hurry up, I'm really hurrying up. Approval of, approval of the, of the grant we have approved, have actually received is going to come before the board, but as in the past, this is just permission to apply for a grant, there is no commitment whatsoever of any township funds, this is just the permission to apply.
Good point to end on, okay.
If I can just, I'll, I'll make it actually even more brief, it's to improve the intersection in the property at Old York Road and Susquehanna, and we have looked at the Old York Road Carter study, and it's consistent with the Old York Road Carter study and the improvements that should happen at this intersection.
Good, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? And the, the group that has been working on this has worked very hard on this, and I commend, some of them are here in attendance this evening, I thank you very much for your efforts on this, and Assistant Township Manager Wayne Meyer also. Uh, any other comments, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Uh, item PA2, ordinance number 2123, the no smoking in township parks and playgrounds ordinance. This is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2123, which prohibits smoking in township parks and playgrounds, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Oh, Commissioner Rothman.
I hope literally briefly, um, I just wanna thank the township solicitors for working with me on, on developing this one and the support of the board. I think that it's really gonna be a good thing for our township to cut smoking out of the, out of the parks. Thank you.
Good job, thank you, sir. Any comments from staff?
President Luger? I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question at the risk of sounding kinda silly with modern day age? Does this include vaping? Blanket, any, anything, okay, great, perfect, thank you.
I'm, I'm sure I missed that state.
Does this include vaping?
I thought you said baking?
You can still bake in parks, right? You can't vape.
No, no vaping.
My Commissioner Bowman's question. No vaping, great, that's it, perfect, thank you.
It includes other forms of smokeless tobacco, too. I mean, vaping may be considered smoke, but it, this is, uh, I believe all forms of smokeless tobacco, smoke, e-cigarettes, everything, as broad as we could write it.
Okay.
Any comments, uh, from staff or audience? Sir?
Raymond Bell, 2076 Parkview Avenue. Uh, excuse my ignorance, but is this the ordinance where you're gonna be fined up to $600?
$300.
Cause I didn't see the ordinance.
Sure, um, I, I believe our township solicitors should answer the way the, the language is crafted in the end. We, we did, uh, I believe changed things based upon the comments we had during committee. I believe it's a $50 fee, correct me if I'm wrong, please, a $50 fee if you're cited, uh, that you can pay in lieu of going to court to argue, but if you go to court, then you could be risking that, up to $600 of a fine could be imposed.
When you do the signs, let me, uh, offer this as a suggestion, when I put up a sign says, uh, young lungs at work and play, and children will breathe here, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Item PA3, Crestmont and Penrin, Penrin Pools feasibility study consultant approval. This is a motion to approve KMS Design Group as the consultant for the Crestmont and Penrin Pools feasibility study, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners?
Yes, Doug, for, Doug, for an update on this?
I was gonna go right into Doug on staff.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, we had five people attended, uh, five companies attended the pre-bid meeting, and then only three submitted proposals. Of the three, we chose KMS because of our experience working with the different components that they, uh, were bringing into it, Kent Baird, who used to work with DG March, and who did work for us, uh, we were familiar with their work, uh, John Hoover, who is the former director of Parks and Rec, uh, and, and ran swimming pools in their township for many years, and, uh, they, they just do a really good job, and the other reason was that they were the least expensive of the three. The next one up was about $300 and some dollars difference, but, uh, I was not as pleased with the work they did for us in a previous proposal.
Okay.
So it's KMS. They're reasonably local, I think they're out in King of Prussia.
What's their, uh, their, what's their timeframe?
Uh, it's, it's about, it's no more than 12 months, but hopefully it'll be done sooner than that. We just, it, it could've been started a while back, but we had to wait for all the approvals, uh, DCNR had to approve certain things in our scope of work, so we, uh, tomorrow, I'm going to call them and let them know if, if this gets approved, that we can start moving forward.
And, and this is partially funded from the grant that we received, is that correct?
Yes, $15,000, I believe.
And is part of their, is part of their scope of work to provide cost analysis of any kind of?
Many kinds.
Renovations that they're gonna suggest through the feasibility?
The, the scope of work is about 15 pages long, and it's, uh, it's pretty comprehensive, and it does, uh, recommend, request recommendations for improvements to the existing facilities, and, uh, will probably, I don't know when we're gonna actually put it out, the bid to actually renovate the pools, that might not be for another year or so, so that if they give us an estimate now, it probably won't be too valid, but.
No, I know, but in the process of their work, will they be doing any kind of cost analysis of, of the suggestions that they're making? I know they're not, they're just for us for budgeting purposes, is what I'm looking at.
They'll definitely be doing cost analysis on, on all the, uh, similar facilities in the area, and, you know, also analyzing how we've been operating, if it's been efficient, any suggestions to change that, and so they'll, it should be a pretty comprehensive. DCNR has, uh, has the scope of work developed, uh, over many years, so it's, it should be very helpful to us when we go to actually do the renovations.
Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from staff? If not, any from residents? Uh, I see Mr. Alfred Shy signed up, but, uh, that's for comments after the meeting. Is he still here in attendance?
I think he left.
Okay, all right, so, um, if there are no other comments from residents, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And our final item is PA4, Shade Tree Commission TD Foundation Grant. This is a motion to accept the TD Foundation contribution in the amount of $2,500, and I so move.
Second, removed and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, I'm sorry. Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
President Luger, that concludes our public affairs agenda.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luger, I'd like to call on Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the treasurer's report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein, good evening, good evening, everyone. I'm first gonna report on the various monies received from, uh, the township department's depositary public bank for the month of July of '16. We had a total of $1,587,263, which was an increase over the prior year for that month of $322,69. And year-to-date, we have an even larger increase of $6,318,92 over the prior year-to-date. As for real estate taxes collected, we brought in $101,535, a year-to-date of $25,698,81, with a balance to collect of $107,2301, 96% year-to-date with 4% balance, and for the month of July, it was an increase over the prior July of $22,752. That's my report, I entertain any questions if anyone has them. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC1, motion to A, approve the June expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $2,766,012.16, and sours and wages in the amount of $1,830,418.62. B, to authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in payments of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of September 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
DePulis?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Hacker?
Yes.
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 FC2, motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for June 2016 as previously circulated to the board. Advance in travel expense reports were $0.00 and $3,465, respectively. Six-month expense totaled $23,708.09, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC3, motion to approve the clearing fund, deferred revenue expense activity, and petty cash balances for the month of June as previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of June 2016 were $1,215.11 and $0.00, respectively. Deferred revenue expense, revenue expenses, receipts, and disbursements for the month of June 2016 were $35.00 and $10.00, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Any comments from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and, um, my question is, are the colonade expenses coming out of petty cash? Cause I don't think there's a line in our budget for colonade, and the budget for the colonade must be zooming through the roof between legal, third-party reviewers, all of the, the staff emails out the wazoo with 10 people looking at all of them, uh, it, thousands and thousands of documents. I'm wondering if we have a line item or we're taking that out of petty cash, or is it coming from the fund balance, or how's that happen?
For the interest of, uh, the question, does you care to answer it, Township Manager Lefier?
For the record, the question has nothing to do with the motion before the board, but I will respond, the, uh, legal fees associated with the colonade are taken out of the administrative budget under legal fees.
Thank you.
The legal fees are coming out of the administrative fund, okay, so we, we've got that. Now, where are all the other thi- I mean, staff time has multiplied by, I can't imagine how much. Okay, we have third-party reviewers that we're paying, where does that come out of? Does it come out of the administrative, too?
Well, I don't think you wanna get into.
I mean, do we have, do we have an entire page for the colonade? Do we have a chart and a page for the colonade? And where, what is it coming out of?
That's your question, I think we'll defer, I'm sorry, go ahead, counselor.
I don't believe it's a line item, it's under legal fees and still with.
Under our legal fees on the budget, right.
But it's not all legal. Uh, legal fees would be the exorbitant fees that we've had from all these lawsuits and all this action, and now we have, every other department has contributed excessively, including things like third, so where do third-party reviewers, where does that, where does that reside? On what line in the budget? When you have to hire a third-party reviewer?
Proper time or place to discuss that, I don't think we have any of this information at our disposal, but if you wanna delve into it, Counselor, or Michael, if not.
I, I believe it's, if there's third-party reviewers in the normal course, just like it would be for anybody else who's applying for a permit, that would probably be in the code budget. Michael, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Uh, most of those fees, I believe, again, around the administrative bus, uh, budget, again, under legal fees. And again, this has nothing to do with the motion before the board.
Right, so, since it has nothing to do with the motion on the floor, we'll end it right here and move on.
Okay, I, I would like to see an accounting for, for the colonade, to see, because it has cost the taxpayers unbelievable. I think that's why they got their tax pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Commissioner Luger, I'm gonna pass FC4 on to, um, Vice Chair, Commissioner Hacker, since part of this motion, um, has to do with the colonade project.
Thank, thank you. Uh, FC4, and this is a motion to appropriate $100,000 from the fund balance for legal fees, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hacker?
Yes, Commissioner Luger, um, I wanted to address Finance Director Barron. He had, uh, shared a spreadsheet earlier this week with the Finance Committee to, that broke out the, the legal fees to date this year, and if I'm reading that correctly, of the expenditures to date, 71% of that was for the, uh, police arbitration, 26% was for activities related to the colonade, and then there's a miscellaneous 3% for other, other items that you've undertaken.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Just to.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Excuse me, just to sharpen that up in one bit, Commissioner Hacker, that's out of, so that was a, for the, you were talking about the total?
Yes.
Budget, right, I didn't, but 105,000 was budgeted for the year to begin with.
That's right.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Comments from residents?
I think the colonade is a good example, by the way, to, to mention when we say that we almost rarely ever hear when you say any comments from staff, and I think that the emails behind the scene pretty much showed that staff was not on board with much of anything that was going on, and that they should be speaking up. I would like to encourage them to speak up. I would like to encourage them to speak up.
Mrs. Lehman, what is, your comment is--
In this particular--
What is your question?
This is about the funding for the legal fees. I do not believe, I, this is my opinion, I hope I'm entitled to it, I've certainly put in the work to understand it, that the legal fees were largely caused by the writing of the MOU, which was an attempt to go around the codes and decide what things should be without literally following the same route that everybody else does. So, the same attorneys that wrote the MOU then got appointed at, I think it was 2:25 an hour, to defend the MOU when it went to court. I am so completely opposed to that, I cannot tell you. It's got to be part of President Obama's job creation reward system. I can't even imagine. It is offensive to me that we cannot recognize that the problems that happened here happened because when the other side went to court, they said, "You're not following the MOU." Well, that's because code said something different. Here's what the code says. And the MOU, of course, says you have to meet all the codes, so we've got ourselves covered. But it didn't keep us from going to court. When they went to court, if they hadn't had an MOU and they were filing in court to not adhere to the codes, you would have just said, "It's a frivolous lawsuit." I'm not sure why we didn't charge frivolous lawsuit and just end it there. So, I am opposed to this. Please do not pay these legal fees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, one other, Vice President Klein.
As I said in the beginning, I'll be recusing myself from this vote, as part of it has to do with the colonnade, and I am working on the project.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that. Having said that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that's the end of our, that's the end of the Finance Committee agenda.
Okay, that concludes our formal agenda for the evening. So, at this time, I'll take comments from residents. It looks like, again, I'll call for Mr. Alfred Scheib, who wants to speak on Public Works.
Commissioner Luker, I spoke to, I spoke to Mr. Scheib before he left, and he was here asking about knotweed and how that, and I know he's, I think he's had some conversations, and he was going to continue conversations with Commissioner Farron, but you weren't out here, and he just wanted me to let you know, so--
That he was here, okay. I'll follow with him. Thank you.
Okay, so that's taken care of, and Marlon Sellers spoke, and that takes care of any residents. Anyone in the audience want to speak at this time?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. And I would just like to take these three minutes so that the rest of the township can understand what you approved tonight, and I thank the people who tried not to get that approved tonight, because it does speak directly to the safety of the residents in this community. The consent order that you were approving allowed that use and occupancy permits go out, and that the residents could go into the building before the electric is done, before the fire panel is done, before the pump is finished. All of these things are huge safety issues that nobody should be going in without these things done. In one place here, it says that the load will be calculated after the residents are fully in there. Okay? That's good that it is calculated afterwards, but I hope the load has been fully calculated, that you wouldn't normally do that, would you? You would calculate it beforehand, you'd make sure everything was appropriate, and you would only calculate it afterwards if you had a problem. This is almost anticipating a problem. The fact that this particular document had to be created is only because following code doesn't do this. Code wouldn't allow that. And the ability for them to put up a fire command center but have people in there 60 days before the fire command center is working, and the radio, two-way radios don't have to be tested, that you're giving out use-- that's only for the landlord's pocketbook that you're doing that, just to make him more money. And the landlord has not been an honorable actor in any of this. For 20 years, the records show that he did not do what he needed to do. And when we went in, including with a commissioner as part of it, those particular issues were not solved. That commissioner charged forward with the plan while the fire system was not working. He didn't stop and say, "We have to fix the fire system. There's people living here." We, I mean, major problem. This is a major problem, and people at home need to know what happened, and I thank the people that voted against that, and I hope that you will continue to pursue that. We're going to pursue it in other avenues as well, as you know. The Attorney General has been here, as you know, and the people at home should know that when they have things for the Attorney General, that this is a good time to send them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from residents? Okay, at that juncture, we'll take comments from commissioners. Commissioner Bowman?
Just to the members of the Roslyn Valley Business Association, and Ed Michelow and his wife, and Jack Howarth and his wife, for all their efforts to beautify and add to Roslyn's appeal with the lighting program. It's beautiful, and it's appreciated. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Commissioner DePlacido?
Thank you, President Luker. Just want to let you know that Angels in Motion are at it again. They're having another blessing bag party, and they invite you all this Friday night from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the McKinley Fire Hall. Like I said in past meetings, pardon me, we started this venture with the Roslyn Community Center, and the first time, we collected 250 bags, did another one there and collected 320 blessing bags, and now we're going to go for the record today on Friday, or on Friday. So, again, Friday night, 7:00 to 9:00, at McKinley Firehouse, Angels in Motion Blessing Bag Party. And if you have any questions, or you don't know what a blessing bag is, look it up. AngelsInMotion.com. And also, when driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Farron?
Thank you, President Luker. Just want to thank all of our staff again. They've been helpful in the past couple of weeks, especially, I'm getting re-acclimated to the United States again after my time away. Very helpful, very much appreciated, and just to remind everybody that school is starting. That is not a bad thing. Hopefully, you're taking the next couple of weeks to get your children and yourselves acclimated to the new schedule and the homework, and remind your students and your children, your sons and your daughters, that this is an opportunity to grab their education and seize the opportunity and improve their, not just their lives, but their experiences and their relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the fire chiefs that were here tonight for attending and giving their thoughts, which were, I think we all have the same feeling, and I just want to thank all of the volunteers. We are so lucky to have so many volunteer firemen and women. We should be very proud of them, and I think we all are up here. Thank you again.
Thank you. Commissioner Hacker?
Thank you, President Luker. Wanted to say congratulations to all who were involved in last week's pre-national night out in Ward 10, the police department, the fire companies, the second alarmers, and all the community groups. It was a spectacular evening, and a special thank you to Dave Rondinelli, a proud Ward 10 resident who helped organize these activities. It was a great night.
Thank you. Commissioner Kalanowski?
Ditto to Carol Gillespie there, great volunteers we have in Abington. Just a real quick notification, that the American Legion Post 248 of Glenside is now moving their meetings to the North Penn VFW in Glenside. If anybody's interested in joining the American Legions, this first Tuesday of every month, starting September 2nd at 7:30. If you want to know the difference between an American Legion and a VFW, VFWs fought in foreign wars. American Legions are welcome. Everyone that's been service, men and women throughout the country, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice President Klein?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman?
No comment for this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Just wanted to take a moment to thank, on behalf of Commissioner Rothman and Commissioner DePlacido, Deputy Chief John Livinggood and his team, which I believe was Officer Roger Gillespie, Tammy Gillespie, Officer Joe Blythe. Let me know if I'm missing anyone who helped us, helped us host the meeting at the McKinley Fire Hall, and thanks to the fire guys, too, for having us there. They hosted a meeting on crime in the neighborhood, some recent break-ins, and advised the residents on how to try to avoid that, and good tips, and a really insightful look at the police department's website, which has some great features to check out to help you avoid that, avoid crime.